Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting of April 6, 2017. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lovely meeting today and we're going to start right away, I believe, with budget information.
Good evening. I'm going to be reviewing the proposed budget for 2017-18 in hopes of adoption this evening. We've gone over the details from meeting to meeting over the last few months and it's now down to, you know, the time to decide whether or not, you know, we're adopting the budget based on the information that's been provided. So, the important things I'd like to point out are, I'm summarizing what I've been presenting the last few meetings and the changes in staff mainly, main things that affect the budget. We have 2.4 teachers at the high school being added, which is in the area of science, ELA, a .4 in Spanish, which would be shared with the middle school for a full teacher, which means .6 of that teacher would be at the middle school. And a 12-month office assistant being replaced with a school calendar employee, which means that they would only be here during the school calendar, not the full 12 months. At the middle school, we would be adding three teachers. Again, the .6 in Spanish, shared with the high school, a .4 in Home and Careers, which is a mandated program, .6 in social studies, which addresses our class sizes at this time, a .8 in ELA and reading, writing and writing lab one time a week in general ed, and a .6 special education and reading teacher shared with the high school. In addition, the Director of Learning and Innovative Educational Opportunities for our K through 12 students, a teaching assistant and one monitor position at the middle school possibly for our learning lab, and a full-time cleaner at the high school to accommodate some new scheduling in the 17, 18 school year, and a replacement of the eight retiring teachers and seven retiring non-teaching positions. So those last, that last bit is just replacement of staff that already exists. So, we talked about staying within the tax cap. Our budget is tax cap compliant, which means that residents, again, who are STAR eligible will be receiving the tax credit that they received last year. I know we hadn't talked about that before, but that's a continuation. Because we're proposing a budget that's within the tax cap, it would, it would mean a tax credit for residents again. So, the CPI this year for the calculation of the tax cap is at 1.26 percent. That could have increased the Putnam Valley tax levy by .96 percent when you go through the formula, but the levy is being proposed at an increase of .84 percent. So, a little bit lower than, just to meet the requirements of the budget. An additional $300,857 in tax levy. So, the tax levy remains lower than it was five years ago, as does the overall budget, and I'll show you that in a slide that's coming up. And a reminder that the board made a decision to lower the final tax levy after the vote by $650,000 aggregately over the last two fiscal years, and I think that's an important reminder to keep putting out there to our residents, letting them know that the district has been tax cap compliant as well as fiscally responsible. This is the proposed revenues that we expect in 2017-18 in comparison to the last three budget cycles. We're at a budget of $48,544,139. Overall, the budget's a $600,000 increase, which represents 1.25 percent. The tax levy itself is, like I said, it is a slight increase over what we ended up with in, at the end of the voting last year. The tax levy was actually $35.8 million, but when we adopted the tax levy in August, it was reduced by $370,000. So, the increase is $300,857. The different sources of revenue are represented by appropriated fund balance, $1.6 million, slightly higher than last year. But the $370,000 that we reduced the levy by would have increased our use of fund balance for last year. So, overall, we have a decrease in the use of our fund balance this year. I know it's a little bit complicated, but, you know, that's, that's the way it works. When we decide to reduce the levy, it has to come from somewhere. Some, some money came in from state aid, but we were able to use our, our fund balance and, and take it from there. The local non-tax sources are our tuitions and interest on earnings and, and local share of refunds from prior year's expenses, very limited to what we get in that category. Our state and federal sources are $10.4 million in the budget. We do not have a state budget yet for our state aid, so we're not sure how that's going to end up. Right now, it's frozen until further notice, until there's some more decisions made. And currently, they're holding our state aid for this year only till the scheduled, what's going to be paid out through May 31st. And until the state settles the budget for next year, they won't even release any more of this year's aid. So, hopefully, they're on target with their estimates that they gave us in January. The expenditures, again, the total budget, $48.5 million. Our general support area of the budget, $4.3 million. Instruction, $28.8, which is 4 percent higher than it was in the prior year. But again, that is the largest portion of the budget. That is where all our teacher salaries and, you know, instructional needs are, which is, should be the largest portion of the budget, and, and that's what represents the increase. It's, it's actually been reallocated most, from the most part, you can see in the next category, transportation is a, is down 4.49 percent, and the benefits are down 4.16 percent. So, an overall budget increase of 1.25 percent. This is the chart I was speaking about, where we have a 10-year, a 10-year, sorry, representation of the budget. Five years ago, the budget was at $48.6 million. We're at $48.5, still lower than five years ago. Our tax levy, $35.8 million five years ago, $35.7 proposed for 2017-18. In addition to the budget, we'll be voting on a proposition for the Energy Performance Contract. Sorry, I skipped a slide there. So, that will be a proposition on the ballot that voters will be asked to vote on. And just to give you a little information about that project, which I think is, is a very important piece of this, of this, this vote in particular, because if the proposition is approved via the voting process, the district will be able to receive an incentive of an additional 10 percent in aid based on the, the total cost of the project, which is about If the vote is not approved, the district will still go ahead with the, or be able to go ahead with the Energy Performance Project contract, but we will not receive the extra $600,000. The, the purpose of getting the additional aid, or the state feels that if we share this information with our community and we're letting them know what our plans are for energy-saving, energy-saving implementation, that we will receive the extra aid. And this is their, their reason for doing it. So, the Energy Performance Contract will allow the district to upgrade our facilities with more efficient equipment, and while we finance the new equipment with the generated energy savings that the project will, the guaranteed energy savings that the project will generate. Some of the highlights include the following. We'll have solar voltaic rooftop systems on the middle school, high school, and elementary school bus garage roof, new window upgrades in the elementary school, the 1962 and 1935 wings, new LED lighting. Throughout the district, a geothermal heat pump system at the elementary school. Right now, the elementary school relies on oil. The rest of the districts, the campus at the middle school and high school are totally reliant on the geothermal heat pump system, which means that we use no oil at this facility. And we hope to reduce the amount of oil that we'll be using over there by doing this. We'll be upgrading, building management system at each of the schools. That means the temperature monitoring system through computers. And there will be a curriculum directly related to how to balance economic, social, and environmental systems, K through 12, which will be directly related to the EPC So, we'll generate over $384,000 in annual savings, which, as I mentioned previously, will pay for the project costs over the 15-year finance term. This means there'll be no new cost to the district taxpayer, and as an incentive, the district will receive an extra, additional 10 percent in aid if the voters approve the proposition in May. I wanted to go over also what would happen if, for instance, the budget didn't pass for some reason. I, I need to talk about that each year with what we call a contingent budget, or a re, we can put a new budget up for adoption. So, the board has to decide at that time whether they would propose the same budget for a revote in June, a new budget proposal, or adopt a contingent budget. In all school, I'll just read this because it's straight from the, the law. In all school districts, the state school budgets are determined by qualified voters of the school district. In the event the voters reject a proposed budget, the board has, is empowered to levy a tax sufficient to defray the cost of those items specifically authorized by the statute and the cost of those items determined by the board to constitute ordinary contingent expenses. In addition, Section 2023 of the education law places a computed dollar cap on the administrative component of the budget. All non-contingent items of expenditure must be removed from the contingency budget, and the levy, tax levy proposed cannot be greater than the prior year's tax levy. Health and safety must always be maintained when we adopt a contingent budget, so those items would have to remain in the budget. Determining which falls, items fall under the ordinary contingent expenses rests with the Board of Education. It is also possible that some ordinary contingent expenses would have to be reduced or eliminated in order to meet the levy requirement. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but basically, anything that the board determines to be of health and safety must be maintained in the budget, things that are necessary for teaching and, but things that could be eliminated are things such as athletics, inter, you know, interscholastic athletics, and any types of supplies that were not felt to be absolutely necessary in the budget.
Jill, will the EPC be on hold if we own contingency?
The EPC would not be on hold. It's a separate proposition, and would, the district would be able to go ahead with that.
And our tax levy, Jill, is higher than last year. So, we would have to be looking, if we did went with a contingency budget, instead of putting another budget, we'd have to reduce the budget.
That's correct. The budget is being held on May 16th at the Putnam Valley Elementary School between 6:00 and 9:00 PM. There's absentee ballots, ballots available until the, until, I'm sorry, they can be, they'll be issued and they can be completed and returned no later than 5 o'clock that same day, May 16th. They're available through the district clerk and online. You can get information about that on our website. Trustees, there'll be one position open on the board. Monday, April 17th is the last day to submit a petition to run for the board. And there'll be two propositions on the ballot again, the budget and the Energy Performance Contract. Does anybody have any questions?
Would anyone, any questions?
I don't have a question, just more of a, I guess, a comment, that, you know, this, because we talked about, we've been talking about this for a while. And you more than anybody else, Jill. But, you know, we can't, I don't think we just leave it out there since, and it's not the last time we talked about it before the vote, but it's the time that, you know, when we actually make it what shows up on the ballot. And I guess, I guess I want to be clear, just in general, that, that this, I think this budget represents an investment in student-focused programs, and it does keep the taxpayers' concern in mind while creating this budget. And, and to those student-focused programs, it's smaller class sizes, additional staff, and tools to, to improve the delivery of education to our students, to our community, which in itself is really important to understand. And, you know, one of the indicators is that we're not going all the way up to the top of our, our legal cap. We're using what we think we need to use in order to deliver the best education the town can afford and the district can, can argue for. So, I just, you know, the idea, I see all of this as investment in, in future generations. I don't see it as not thoughtful in keeping those students front of, front of mind. That's all my.
I have just two quick questions. The benefit reduction that we saw of 400, 549,000, I believe?
Okay.
Was the, it's going to be back. Was the, was the driver of that, the retirements and is, or what? I forget.
Okay, the drive, the driver of that is the New York State Retirement System contribution reduction in the rate that they have, they charge the district based on the salaries of employees. So, the New York State Teacher Retirement System Contribution Rate and the Employees' Retirement System Contribution Rate are being reduced for, for 2017-18.
That's because the, the stock market's done better in the last several years?
That's correct. There is a great, a good outlook on that now, and there has been. It would have been a greater reduction. We have a 4 percent increase in health insurance for our premiums this year, which is like an additional $400,000. So, had we not had some of those things happen, some of the things that we're doing would not be possible.
The other question I had was the, is the, part of the transportation, did we adjust for, are we still planning to add the additional buses for a later start time in this budget?
I have, I have in there included the later start time anticipation of piloting that program in February. I know we talked about doing and not doing it, still unsure of that answer. So, in there is the, the money that is, that we would need for that second half of this year.
It's in there, so if we don't do it, we would have...
Right. You're seeing a reduction there. We had purchased some buses last year, and we have a couple of retirements in that area of the, of the budget. So, that's why you're seeing a reduction there.
If we chose to not put that in, where, where do we, where do we put that money?
So, that money, in my recommendation, would go back into the fund balance. We are using quite a bit of fund balance to balance this budget as far as the revenues go, and I would recommend that, that $124,000 go back into the fund balance and reduce those, that line. Right now, I can't count on state aid, so there's...
No, and that was my other, but I know, I know the answer, but that state aid, go back to the, the revenues, that increase of $365,000 in state aid...
Basically, that's because we don't have a reduction for gap elimination aid anymore. They reinstated that last year. So, by reinstating that, they've given us back, you know, an additional amount of aid.
And this $10,415,000, I know we can't count on that, but, but that, how did you arrive at that number?
So, the, the estimate that was given by the governor in January was, for our district, was in the area of 10.6. I think last year, I went over a 10-year picture of how our aid is predicted based on the estimates that they give us and based on what we actually end up getting. That is a conservative number, I feel, for our district based on the expenditures we had in the current year, because that's how we'll, that's what drives the aid for next year. So, 10.4 is, is, I felt was more reasonable than what their estimate was, since we, we normally don't get what they predict.
It's conservative, and we got surprised to the good last year, so that couldn't happen or bad, right?
For instance, this year, I mean, last year, we budgeted $10,049,000. We're looking at about $10,200,000 this year as the actual amount, and I believe their estimate was much higher than that. So, you know, taking that approach, the one that I took, I think was, was, was a good one.
Yep.
Well, Jill, I want to say thank you once again. I know we did at the start of the process. I know you eat, sleep, and breathe these numbers pretty much since October. And I, I agree, I would agree with Joan, that was very well said, that our job as a board is to walk that balance between offering the finest, highest-quality education that will prepare our students for the future at a fiscally responsible rate, and I loved your words, that the community can afford. And I think we work very hard every year to do that. This year, we added some significant enhancements because we've been feeling the loss of not having those in terms of large class sizes and some other, some other tensions. So, I think, Jill, you've, once again, and Dr. Will's done a great job at walk, keeping up balance to responsibility to the community and our responsibility to the kids.
Thank you.
Jill, just in, on the Energy Performance Contract piece, the, the savings of this 10 percent to $600,000.
Right.
There's also a savings, but that won't, won't be in next year's budget, so we're not talking about that. But there, there is an additional savings beyond that by doing this Energy Performance Contract in our utility costs, right?
So, right, so that's the, what we talked about here, the savings in the, what we're estimating each year, annual savings of $384,000.
That's, is that $384,000, they're using all of that to fund the project, though?
That's in annual savings, no, it, well, yes, to fund the project over the 15 years. Correct. It has to, the state will not approve the project unless the savings that's generated from the project is equal to the amount that we have to pay out over that term.
But those savings will last after the contract is over, so that will continue to be...
The additional amount that the district will realize is the additional 10 percent, which is about $52,000 a year in building aid that we would not otherwise get unless the proposition is approved.
And then, in theory, at the end of that 15-year period, we'll go up to a $400,000 a year savings?
It should, I mean, systems, you know, they get old.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to maintain them.
You know, I don't know what that amount, but that's the anticipated amount, yes.
Still be flying cars in 17 years when this is all done, so.
I'm sure at that time, there would be some sort of a reevaluation, but that is what they guarantee for the 15 years.
Will we be, we be flying those cars over the Pudding Street Bridge?
Yeah.
And that leads into your presentation.
We'll need a bridge. Don't say that, Jill. Don't take this.
Okay. Any other questions? And since it is our only presentation, are there any, can I open up for public contribution about the budget for anybody who's interested? Barbara, Jeanne, feel free.
I'm funny.
Okay. Sarah? Student, are we right at the student report already?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this weekend, Billy Elliott, the High School Musical, was performed this past weekend. I had the privilege to attend on Friday night, and I was blown away by the performance. Not only were the performers able to sing and act well, but there was also a ton of dance and choreography involved. It was clear that the students had worked incredibly hard, and their hard work and long rehearsals clearly paid off. Thank you to the cast, crew, but also to the pit musicians. This year, several students from Putnam Valley High School were able to perform in the pit, which is a considerable honor. Congratulations to all on a great production. The Journal News released their Wrestling All-Stars for Westchester-Putnam, and our six, six state qualifiers earned another recognition by being named to the following All-Star teams. The first team included Satoshi Abe and Jared Eliopoulos. The second team included Mikey Bruno, Kyle Sams, and Konstantin George. Robbie Vlecheko also received an honorable mention. Just this past week, a breakfast of champions was held for the varsity cheer and state wrestlers to celebrate their amazing achievements this past season. Spring sports have also just started, and teams are playing in their first games. We are looking forward to a successful spring season. If you have been in the high school recently, you may have noticed some beautiful new art exhibits. Thank you to the Putnam Valley Education Foundation and Ms. Armbruster for these mini art galleries throughout the building. Artwork can be easily switched out to provide teachers greater opportunity to, to display students' work. Tonight, 7th grade math classes will be presenting 3D scale models of bridges they designed with the assistance of Archfor Kids. Using the Teconic Pudding Street Overpass as inspiration, students researched bridge designs, created scale drawings, and then created scale models of their designs. During the month of March, the PVES enthusiastically celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday. Students decorated doors and read some of his work and dressed up like some of his most notable characters. These celebrations culminated in an amazing assembly this past Friday. The elementary school also supported the military this month. Students learned the important concept of supporting our military. Students were collected by grade level, so thank you to the community members who sent in donations. Our 6th grade students enjoyed a day of weather with meteorologist Jim Witt. In the active learning lab at the middle school and in the performing arts center at the high school, students learned about weather and how it forms. In an online session, Jordan and a former student of Mr. Witt's talked about the March blizzard we had and how they had predicted 15 inches of snow. Also via Skype, the students met with another one of Mr. Witt's former students, Michael Steinberg, who forecasts for AccuWeather. In addition to speaking about his job, he also talked about the many other jobs at AccuWeather, such as design editors and advertisers. Thank you, Mr. Witt. And finally, the student government in the high school is moving forward with their student shadowing proposal. This proposal allows for teachers to shadow students for a day through all nine periods. A presentation was made at a faculty meeting on Monday, so the teachers could ask some questions about the program and express their opinions or concerns. The next step is to send out a survey to the teachers to get some feedback.
Thank you. Perfect. And it's probably half of your report. You can still comment, though.
I just, I enjoy hearing Sarah's report.
What's the microphone, Mike?
Oh, sorry. I mean, I enjoy hearing Sarah's report, and we just came, many of us were at the bridge presentation, the bridge exhibit, and it was really quite impressive to see how the students worked together in teams to create these solutions to the problem of the, the Pudding Street Overpass. And we learned... And we learned while we were there that there was an accident there this evening. So it's, it's, it's quite, it's quite a serious matter, and our students, I think, felt that they had an opportunity to use their voices through their work to share the possibilities, and every single one of those bridges was, was a different, was different, a different approach, a different concept. And we were pleased that Mr. Oliverio is there from the town. We had Mr. Cobb from the Highway Department. We had two representatives from the Department of Transportation from the state. And, you know, it was an opportunity to see how, you know, civic engagement can occur, where a community can get together and to actually use this as an educational opportunity. So when those students see this actually happen, that there will be an overpass, they'll have that sense of investment that they were part of this.
And they'll be driving over it by their senior year, hopefully.
Yes, safely, safely. And, and I have to say that Billy Elliot was remarkable, was an absolutely remarkable play. We, we saw everything come together in terms of the stagecraft and the, the acting and the dancing, the, the music from the pit, and just that sense of spirit that you get in a Theater Works production. Very, very exciting for everyone. And there's a musical coming up at the middle school. Shrek is, is, is coming to the, to the middle school, very exciting. So I also wanted to, to comment that yesterday, our 8th grade parents came to the high school, and there was a tour given by students, actually, of the school, and some opportunities to get to know the high school principal, the assistant principal, some fun in, in exploring what the high school has to offer, and just an opportunity for some comfort as they move, as the students and the parents move from the middle school to, to the high school. And I believe that the centenary also provided some information on the kinds of software that you can use when you, if you want to have some control over the cellphone use of your teens. Teens may not like it, but the parents were very interested, because cellphones get kids into a lot of trouble at times.
She did also engage in using the Kahoot app, which they'd use in the class.
Yes, yes.
And they had the parents doing, I guess, comprehension from what was the presentation. So that, that was very, that was fun. Everybody enjoyed that.
Also, I know that each of the board members, or the board members have received some of these brochures from the Science Research Program, where the students have actually put together some wonderful, sort of mini posters, exhibits of their individual research. And again, another way that students are entering into the future that will enable them to take their place in society with some major original work that they're doing, original research that they're learning here at the high school. Just a comment on the, the tests that have been taking place, the ELA state assessments, that we did have a lower number of test refusals, particularly at the elementary school this year. And that was sort of just a trend that may be happening as people get more comfortable with the project, as teachers are integrating the, the knowledge of the Common Core into their program in different ways. So that's something that we are, we are looking at and watching as well. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday to those who celebrate in the coming week, and to people, wishing people an enjoyable break.
Now opening up to public contribution on any of the agenda items?
Could I just piggyback on Dr. Will's comments, that I got to go to the Billy Elliot performance that was on Thursday. It's the Senior Citizens Performance that's become an annual event now. And I don't, I don't look it, but I can fit into that Senior Citizen category. And.
I was wondering that they let you in.
You know, for any seniors who haven't had the opportunity, what a great, great thing, great performance, big crowd there, and all seniors, and we got to see what amounts to their final dress rehearsal, but it goes through just like the show. And, and then afterwards, Mrs. Seth Filoni, I think, guided the Make a Difference Club through a, a meal unbelievably for all the seniors who were at the show. So the cafeteria was packed, and, and it was just wonderful, you know, it was just a wonderful event that everybody got to enjoy. So if you are a senior, this is really an annual thing. You want to, you want to make sure that you catch the Spring Musical and enjoy the dinner with friends from the community, and it was just, just great. Thank you to Make a Difference Club for doing all those things.
Okay, so should we move on to new business? All right, let's move to number one, Mr. Ferraro.
Resolved by the Putnam Valley Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget for the 2017-18 school year in the amount of $48,544,139.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Dr. Jeremy Luft as the Director of Learning and Innovative Educational Opportunities in the Director of Learning and Innovative Educational Opportunities tenure area to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective July 1st, 2017, and through June 30th, 2021, at an annual salary of $178,000 effective July 1st, 2017. Dr. Luft holds New York State permanent certifications in the following areas: School District Administrator, School Administrator, Supervisor, and Physics 7 to 12.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I, I'd like to say a few words about my recommendation. We had an extensive, in-depth hiring process in coming to this state where I am recommending the appointment of Dr. Luft. There was the diligence of an 18-member interview committee representing all stakeholders, and we invited the public, the staff, to be part of that committee, and, and we did have 18 on the committee. And I'm recommending Dr. Luft to this position after the screening of well over 100 resumes and the committee screening, actual screening interview of 13 candidates, and lengthy interviews of three finalists. And the process did end with an interview with the Board of Education this week. I'd like to talk a bit about Dr. Luft's background. Includes teaching of high school physics for four years in North Rockland. He was a Director of Technology in the Austin School District for seven years, and most recently, Director of Instruction at the Hastings School District. At Hastings, he collaborated with staff to build an ELA curriculum at the elementary school, beginning at the elementary school. He observed and supervised teachers at all levels, K through 12, and worked on curriculum at the secondary level as well, in many disciplines. And he supported K through 12 staff. Dr. Luft has his Bachelor's in Physics from SUNY Albany, and he did semiconductor research on thin film technology and microchips at SUNY Albany. He has his Master's from Pace, and most recently, he was awarded his EDD from Manhattanville. So he has achieved the doctorate, which is the highest level of achievement for educators. He has been the recipient, recipient of a number of awards, including New York State Outstanding Technology Leader and the Pioneer Award for Outstanding District Technology. In addition, Dr. Luft has presented at numerous conferences and is both a Google-certified administrator and Intel Master Trainer. Attributes that we use to describe Dr. Luft's strengths included how well he connects and builds positive relationships with staff, parents, and students, how he solves problems and innovates, follows up, champions, and completes initiatives, listens and supports accountability, asks about what is needed, and coaches to improve and grow. I heard from an administrator who said, "When he is passionate about something, he makes a point to move it forward." From an elementary principal, I heard, "He is always available, exceptional as a technology director, and much more." Jeremy will strive to understand the issues and bring people together to solve them. From a Superintendent of Schools, he has the respect of the entire staff. He connects easily with everyone. With the dual strengths in technology and curriculum, Dr. Luft, Luft completes the circle for Putnam Valley in building on our foundation of technology advancement, as well as our quest for academic excellence and student success. And it is really quite an honor, if you will, it's sort of a legacy that Dr. Luft did have his early training here in Putnam Valley, and we should all be proud, I think, that we have him coming here. That's the circle that is completed. So we look forward to Dr. Luft joining our school community officially on July 1st. And he will also be here on May 2nd for an upcoming superintendent's listening hour so that our community can engage in a conversation on ELA or other matters, other curricular areas. And I hope we'll get community members there to join us. I strongly recommend Dr. Luft to the, to the Board of Education.
Anybody else have any other comments before we vote? I didn't, I learned something in the interview process, that the first time the high school was proposed, it was almost passed, and Dr. Luft would have been the first graduating class. But at the time, they defeated that vote, so it's taken him all these years to come be in this high school. So I'm glad he's finally gotten there, and maybe he'll become as famous and have his name on the wall, like his brother Josh's, who is one of our athletes honored downstairs, so. There's no other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
You're building bridges? And Dr. Luft, it's clear you get your fashion sense from your sons. We did, we did.
You got 100%.
All right, let's move along to number three. Are you, Mr. Spittle?
Yep. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board appoints Paula, Paula Hillier to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on April 18, 2017, and terminating on April 18, 2021, in the Teaching Assistant tenure area, at an annual compensation in the amount of $22,000. Step one of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated, and in accordance with PB CSD Policy 9250 as Hillier holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board appoints Teresa Drenovac, I apologize if I mispronounced it, to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on April 18, 2017, and terminating on April 18, 2021, in the Teaching Assistant tenure area, at an annual compensation of $23,240. Step three of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated and in accordance with Putnam Valley Central School District Policy 9250. Ms. Drenovac holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Christopher Saboso as a long-term middle school social studies substitute teacher, effective April 18, 2017 through June 30, 2017, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $120 per day. Mr. Saboso holds Social Studies 7 through 12 initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved to approve the Putnam Northern Westchester Health Benefits Consortium Municipal Cooperation Agreement as per Document Number 186/17 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items 2 through 8, as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving additional hours for two teachers who will be attending a therapeutic crisis intervention program for the schools. We're amending hours for the E&amp;L course planning teachers. We're approving a health and welfare contract with the Lakeland School District for our 26 students who attend private school within their district. We're transferring funds to cover special projects, Shades in the High School and Electronic Sign at the Elementary School. We're approving additional coaches for the spring season, a modified girls lacrosse coach, and a boys' modified lacrosse coach. And I should mention that the boys' coach, Mr. Peter Calvecchio, is working as a volunteer and will not be getting paid. We're increasing the hours working for a part-time or for assistant in the district office from 15 to 19.5 hours per week, and that's just a short-term change, and this will be covered by a grant, and we're approving additional hours for the substitute to you list.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opening up to public comment on any topic?
I have two just quick announcements. For the community, our next Board of Ed meeting on April 18 is on a Tuesday, not on a Thursday. We'll be meeting here on Tuesday at 7 o'clock, and all 18 component districts of the Putnam Northern Westchester Police will be meeting that night to vote on their budget and on the three candidates besides our regular business meeting. In addition, if I forget at the next meeting, the following meeting, which is our budget review meeting and our regular meeting, is also on a Tuesday, and that's on May 2nd.
And can I also invite, cordially invite everybody to that April 18 meeting? It will be a celebration of our tenure candidates, but more importantly, of our retirees. And the more people we can have here celebrating their careers, because we have a number of them this year, I think the more special it would be.
Just to note that the MAGMA Special Needs Soccer Program is in full swing on Sunday mornings. And so if any community members know of any young people who could avail themselves of that program. Mr. Spittle, do you happen to, what is the lower age? You know, I know there's a lot of real little ones who, who start low. Do you know what the lower age limit is?
Probably four or five? I think it's four or five, yeah.
Four or five, and that goes right on up. There's teenagers as well, so if you know anyone who can avail themselves of that, please contact, I guess Mrs. Dougherty would be a good person to contact right at the schools, and it's, it's going great as usual.
Ms. Snake?
Just a public service announcement. On April 26, the PTA and PTSA are working together to host a screening of Screenagers, growing up in the digital age. I haven't seen it yet, but I've heard great things about it. It really dives into the difficulties that families face with social media and video games. It's about an hour long. I think they're looking to do some discussion after. It is a free event. It's open to the entire community, but I really do hope parents will take advantage. Here at the high school in the PAC, 6:30 on April 26. Thank you.
That's a clever title, Screenagers. That's clever.
On, on April 23, the district, members of the district and the coaching women mostly, will be sponsoring Women in Sports Day that day, and it's open to all the women in our community.
I have one other public announcement, I think. Hold on. Where is it? Sorry. Sorry.
Take your time.
Where are you? Sorry.
Nice early meeting.
Yeah, that's not it. Sorry.
Would anybody like to discuss anything?
Oh, I will. I'll have just an announcement while Joe's looking it up. Not an announcement, but the, last night, the Putnam Valley Education Foundation decided on which grants to fund, so there'll be another, I'm going to. So there'll be another, I'm going to guess at this number, about another fifteen thousand dollars coming into the school in the way of grants to teachers who applied. I can't announce which ones because I don't know if it's public yet.
So they're all innovative and creative additions.
It's their favorite meeting of the year.
I did find it. On Friday, April 28th, here in the PAC, Peers Influencing Peers will have their debut of their movies or their shorts. I think it's a short, I'm not sure. And I guess they do awards and everything, which has students from Putnam Valley, has students from multiple school districts that are involved in this, and they come here for that release. So that is on April 28th, it's a Friday, and I believe it's seven or seven-thirty on that day in the PAC.
Okay. If there's nothing else from anybody on the board, I'd like, I'd resolve to convene an executive session for one matter that may lead to the appointment of a particular person, one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, and one medical matter of one particular person's, after which no additional business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And once again, good night, and have a happy, safe travels and vacation, and a happy and blessed holiday for anybody celebrating. Thank you. Good night.